We're live.
Rock and roll.
All right, I will call to order the Planning Commission meeting, May 21st, 2019. First order, we will adopt the agenda for tonight. Any modifications or additions, anyone? I move to adopt tonight's agenda. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. The agenda is adopted. We're going to approve meeting minutes from the two previous meetings. We'll start with approving the minutes for Planning Commission meeting, March 19th. I move we approve the minutes presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
You're good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. We'll approve those meetings. Next, approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes from April 16th, 2019. I move we approve those minutes as presented. Any second?
Second.
Second also.
Those are approved. Pardon me? Okay. Think you need to call for a vote.
I got a vote on it.
Oh, I thought I called for a vote.
Yeah, second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The top date on the minutes says April 19th, not April 16th.
Right, both those dates were different.
Yeah. Wasn't it two separate meetings?
Two separate meetings.
Right.
Nineteenth and April, well, this is March 19th and...
April 16th.
April 16th.
But on top of the April 16th meeting, it says April 19th.
Ah, in there.
We'll make that adjustment.
Good catch.
Which is it, 16th or the 19th?
March 19th, April 16th.
Okay, so we'll make that correction and we will approve the minutes from April 19th. Good?
Yes.
Correct. All right, thank you. Okay, discussion items for tonight. First, we have a public hearing regarding amending R1 and R2 zoning districts. Just for our guests, how we will do this. First, we will have a discussion led by the city planners. We will then move to a discussion with the Planning Commission. After that, we'll open the public hearing portion of the meeting and we welcome your comments. We ask that you just come up to the podium, state your name, address, share your comments. We will continue with discussion and then we will move to make a motion. So I'm going to guess, Paul, you're going to lead us on this?
Yes, Chair.
All right.
Chair, Commission, thank you. Today, I would like to discuss and propose amending some of our code, particularly the amendments for the R1 and R2 residential zones. I also have a short presentation here as well. Just a little bit of background. In 2017, the City of Victoria started modernizing its zoning code by creating new zoning districts. Basically, the city went from R residential, MMR, multiple residential, Lake Minnetonka, and then some commercial and industrial zones. During that 2017 change, we went from R1, R2, R3, and R4 with also the LMR district. Each increasing number increased the density. In the process of changing these districts, the single-family use was included in both the R1 and R2 districts, with the R2 having reduced standards to the R1. And to accomplish the aims of having this variety of code and to provide more options in what's called the straight zoning or straight zoning development type, uses had been overly blended between these districts, and I'll elaborate on that concept here in a moment. The reason for the proposed action is to create clear options for the developers to choose from and that the comprehensive plan calls for. Single-family options in the R1 with larger lots, less impervious surface, and more green space, whereas in the new two-family option, which will be the R2, there'll be smaller lots, more impervious surface potential, and less green space. The question that became before staff and also is directed by council was if we have an R2 that accommodates the R1 without the increased size lots, reduced impervious surface or green space requirement, then why have the R1 at all? And again, I'll alliterate more on that topic here in a moment. So what staff is looking to do is to amend the R1 zoning to clearly state what this zone is for, particularly single-family zoning, to change the purpose and scope, to clarify that language, and to remove the side yard setbacks of a combined total 20 feet to just that of 10 feet each side, which is pretty standard in many cities and in many zoning codes. We also look to amend the R2 zoning standard to clearly state that this zone is meant for two-family zoning type. We look to change the purpose and scope with clarifying language, remove association, single-family dwellings, remove semi-detached residential dwellings, adding two-family dwellings, and changing the minimum lot size to 10,000 square feet and side yard setbacks to 10 feet. We'll allow for single-family dwelling units for approved developments prior to the effective date of this change. So anything that's currently zoned R2 will still retain that current zoning type. And so there's a couple of examples of that currently near Lake Wasserman. So some recommended additional changes that was not found in the packet, which is available in front of you, also available on the back table as well, so anyone can grab that if they wish. Because we're changing the zoning type, we have to also update the definitions. And so the update to the definitions would include the removal of association, single-family dwellings, removal of semi-detached residential, and the addition of a definition for two-family dwellings, which is pretty straightforward. It will be residential structures consisting of two dwelling units only. So the question is, why make these recommended changes? The single-family dwelling uses are allowed in both R1 and R2. The R2 zoning district provides for the same benefits of R1 without the more appropriate design standards of R1. It does not make sense to have two different standards for the same use in two different zoning districts. In this case, if a developer wishes to engage in its unique subdivision design, then they have the option to engage in the PUD process. A recommended motion, a motion to recommend approval to the City Council, an amendment to the City of Victoria zoning code, updating section 24-1, low-density residential or R1, updating section 42-2, single-family residential R2, and updating 16-1 definitions by removing the association, single, semi-detached, and adding two-family dwellings. With that, I could take questions, and staff is asking for a hearing.
Questions?
I think it makes total sense and works in many other cities, and we're still more lenient than most. Most R1 districts in the other cities I've dealt with are 85-foot width versus our 80. It does not make sense. We currently have a draft as an oversight by our commission back in 17 to have R1 and R2 to be so similar. I think the R2 makes more business sense for multifamily versus single-family. I think it's a great decision, and thanks for catching it and helping us clean it up.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have two questions. Can you provide the definition of a two-family dwelling?
Yes, it's going to be dwelling two-family duplex or dumbo bungalow, meaning it's a residential structure consisting of two dwelling units only.
Okay.
Something you might see here in town is the Jack Arthur Development, just east of town, left-hand side, the twin homes side by side. Where else are we going to see? We see a lot in Deer Run. There's a lot of twin homes scattered throughout the Deer Run community.
Okay.
Then how would we classify, let's go, there's some more row-type housing. What district does that fall under now?
Technically, that'd be R3, I believe. Right? Because we have townhomes and row homes. And so the hope of this is to create discreet zoning districts. So when you go to do an R1, you're looking for single-family. When you go to do an R2, you're looking for something with more density, a townhome-type structure. Just referencing back to my experience, I think back to other cities I worked for, and that's been very common in those situations. And I think, you know, if we want to do something more unique, say you want to do smaller lots but still have that maybe villa style, then there'd be an option to go with the PUD option, which is always available.
I would assume some of the flats would be in R4 district?
Correct. And the flats would even, yeah, I'd say R4 or the CBD district, which would allow for a unique zoning type.
So the R3 is a multi-family district, but it's limited in scale, and it only allows apartment buildings, I think, up to 36 units. So the flats at 80 units would be in R4 district.
Is much larger than the cities I've worked with?
Right.
I'm still more lenient than most I've worked with.
Absolutely.
When we have a choice like this, you know, there's benefits, there's downside to it. Is there, looking at this from a developer's standpoint or anything, is there a downside to this, in your opinion?
Well, I think there's a, you know, to look at the opposite of the issue is always important. So, I mean, a downside could be that you have to go through, instead of going through the R2 currently to get like an association, which would be like a smaller lot, I think it's 7,000 square feet, the impervious surface, I think, is 40 or 55 percent. You know, they would have to be a choice between going with the 10,000-square-foot lot size or 12,000-square-foot lot size and the 35 percent. You have to make a hard decision about what type of product you're going to be providing to that particular community, and whether or not that meets or fits the type of development style and design, and whether or not you want to engage in the PUD process. And so I think that's one consideration.
And I think that staff would always suggest that the PUD process is an appropriate process because every development is unique, every piece of land is unique, and it just gives flexibility for the developers and the city to create a development that is appropriate for the surrounding areas.
From a development standpoint, it gives you a clearer picture going into it. This is kind of what the city's expecting. And as you walk across that line in the PUD process, you kind of know what's expected, and that's where the negotiation and trading back and forth goes. If this is what's straight zoning, this is what we're asking for to get this, we got to give that. Makes sense?
The 2040 comp plan, this really doesn't impact that at all, I'm assuming.
No. I would say not.
Yeah, I would agree. I don't think so. Anybody else? I think we have, I know we have a couple of guests. I know one's going to have some comments, or maybe both.
Open the hearing, sir.
So we'll officially open the public hearing portion of the meeting, so.
Dave Gashdock, lives at 10100 Victoria Drive. And you may notice that we're in the process with D.R. Horton plating out the property right now. We came with the concept, it got approved by you guys and from the council. And my question is really, now, in your notes, you have that May 28th date, anything approved? So what is your definition of approved?
I think we'll also bump that to June 10th, I believe, but I believe, I know the director could clarify that for me. So their property has been approved?
No, it hasn't been approved.
The concept has been approved.
Right, the concept has been approved.
Right.
What the date and the ordinance would be if the final plat had been approved, so...
Well, that ain't going to happen.
No.
I mean, that's obvious, and they spent a lot of time and money, and we started out with a concept that's completely different that was approved by a former staff. And I had an option of two different developers buying the property. I took the lesser offer, and we sat down with staff, and we said, will this work? And it was Mark at that time and Kara, and I don't know if Doug was involved too, and we said, I want to know, is this going to work or not? Yes. And we asked them, D.R. asked them, my broker asked them, and then here, it's completely different now, so we got a little wave going here right now because there's so many townhomes. Originally, there wasn't going to be townhomes. We're going to do higher density. And like I say, I could have got more money, but it was stretched over a couple of years. Now you're saying June. There's no way. It would have been if we would have stuck to our original concept and plan.
Can I ask, as a new person, can I slow down, can we slow down for just a minute? Can you describe which piece of property you're talking about?
It's, well, it's the Gashdock Vogel property, and it's south on County Road 11, just south of Marsh Lake Road. It's 100. I don't know what the whole plat is. I'm selling off like 90 acres to him. I got 120.
Okay, that's what I was...
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Dave, can I ask you one question? Was that plat done on straight zoning or the PUD?
Straight zoning.
Okay, thank you.
So the concept plan has been approved, or has been reviewed, the Planning Commission and City Council. It's not the intent of this zoning change, to change that concept plan. What was discussed at the Planning Commission and City Council was agreed upon, and what their concerns are, are still going to go forward with the preliminary plat and final plat. The concerns from the Planning Commission and the City Council wasn't the lot sizes. And so those lot sizes are going to be still continuing to go forward. What the concerns of the Planning Commission and City Council was the size of the side yard setbacks. They were at eight feet. And so what I had mentioned to D.R. Horton is that it needs to be 10 feet. So even if you had a 10-foot side yard setback, it wouldn't meet the R2 zoning standards. So it was always the intent to go through with a PUD with that development, with the same lot sizes but with a greater side yard setback.
Oh, see, now, that's the first I heard about because Mike was always saying, you know, do a PUD if they wanted to, but it was never asked. I never heard that you asked them to do that. We were always on the pre-10s. It was an R2 zoning.
That's what has always been recommended, both for Welter and your property.
Okay.
That's what I remember as well, just what I wanted to clarify, because I thought that was coming through the PUD.
Well, that's news, that's news to me, that it was a PUD because everything I knew was an R1, because we even discussed it at one of the meetings, you know, it was an R2 zoning. And we can go back through the minutes, and I know there was one point where it was R2 zoning, because the council was asking about it.
Yep.
So...
But that's what we're recommending, is to do it through a PUD because it didn't meet either the R1 or R2 zoning standards.
Okay. So, you know, it's going to change because, as you're well aware, you know, they've met with you, and, you know, it can't work out that way, you know? And so they're redrafting everything, and I just don't want it to go boom, you know?
No.
You're back to square one.
Did you mention it was all townhomes, or was there a single-family there as well?
No, there were a single-family, and there was townhomes, and then there got to be more townhomes. And originally, the original concept didn't have it. It was more small lots, villas, you know, things like that, slab-on-grades, you know, narrower lots. It was a combination of a bunch of things. And I don't know how the calculations really worked out, I'm sorry, but, you know, it just ended up, we ended up with a bunch of townhomes, and their company's like, no, that ain't what we originally sat down with, and, you know, and like I say, I did my due diligence coming up here, sitting down with staff, you know, because I had a big decision to make too, me and my wife, you know, as to what, you know, which direction to go. And, you know, we'd still like it to work out, you know, but I don't know if it's going to be too restrictive, if, you know, if they're going to follow through or not.
And we're still working with D.R. Horton on the land uses.
Right.
Again, the lot sizes that were in the concept plan, we haven't mentioned anything about making them any larger or smaller.
Okay.
I think that was what the direction of the Planning Commission and City Council was.
Sure.
Just ask comments. I think, knowing your land like I know your land and the neighboring parcels that spend a fair amount of time out there, almost everything out there is going to more than likely go in the direction of PUD.
Right.
Just because of the way things roll and what happens in slopes and all the other things we've talked about as of late.
Mm-hmm.
I think, as a planning commissioner, I can't speak for the whole commission, everybody will do the best they can to make things work. You're a piece of dirt, and I know you have good intentions.
Sure. Well, it's just, you know, I mean, we see, well, we start out with so much parkland, and then it gets larger and larger and larger. And as most of you know, you go by any city park, there's hardly anybody ever out there. The kids do not go to these parks that, you know, everybody builds, think they're going to come. They're, you know, playing their games, you know, at their friend's house and wherever else. I mean, and that's, you know, like I say, we're losing lots, and which in turn, you know, is less valuable to any developer. Like I say, we got a unique piece of property, and we thought, you know, some stuff, you know, would be naturally considered parkland, but unless it's perfectly flat, it's not. So then the other thing, I guess, you know, just being, I'm a builder and small developer, I've stopped developing because it's just too risky. In today's environment, it's just too costly. But I've, we've always done like 30 lots subdivisions. We're custom home builders, been in business since 1980. I've now built one house, the same, in all these years. We're carpenters, we got our own guys. And the one thing is, I think you guys are going to see a lot more PUDs with going this route, because I get hit up by so many people, you know, I want a small lot, just build a slab-on-grade, you know, downsize, they'd rather have more amenities. John, you're in real estate. And I think that's the direction the whole society's going. You know, our lives have changed, and the new millenniums, they don't want the big houses anymore. I mean, we're building smaller homes, but a lot of upgrades in them. So that's the one thing to think about, too. So, you know, from a developer's standpoint, you know, going through PUD, I don't know if it's how much more work it is, or, you know, because there's always this give-and-take I hear of all, you know, give-and-take, you know, we want something, and it's hard for a developer to come in, kind of in the door, you know, knowing what to expect. And they spend a lot of money, you know, if they're doing soil borings, environmental studies, trees, wetlands, you know, before they even have, you know, a clear picture. So...
A PUD process is the same amount of time as a regular plating process, preliminary plat, final plat. And in both those processes, we always have the concept plan, and the intent of the concept plan is for the developer not to spend a lot of time and money, but to come in and get some preliminary feedback from the City Council and Planning Commission on what they're proposing, if that's the right direction or not. So that kind of helps with that idea that a PUD is a long, drawn-out process. It's not. It's the same as a regular plat.
But there's a lot of uncertainties though for a developer. Correct. More uncertainties.
But that's why they have a concept plan for them to go to the Planning Commission and City Council, to make sure that everybody's on the same page, in the same direction.
See, Dave, our new ordinance actually is favoring what the new market is. If you think about our community as a whole, think about some of the more mature developments of the Deer Run, some of the stuff across the way over there.
Right.
Lots were 90 to 110 feet wide.
Right.
Our minimum expectation now is 80 feet wide, so everything is getting smaller and more, higher densities. They're getting nicer, more amenities. We're busy with hockey and football and basketball. I don't have time to maintain the big corner lot like we desired many years ago. As you've probably noticed in your development, the Hobby Farm, which was a big thing back in the 80s and 90s, is now a thing of the past.
Right.
You're spot on with where the market's going, and I think ordinance has actually followed along quite well.
Right, but I'm seeing a lot of lots 70 feet, you know? Now, you're building 50-foot-wide homes, you know, for the bigger homes, because it used to be 100-foot, you know, so you could put the big Ramblers on. I mean, that, you know, we used to do years ago, and they, you know, but in today's market, it's completely different, and I think you got to look at what the market is today, not living in the past, too.
You're correct on the big Ramblers. We've got a lot of large population or community that wants that product. We can't build it anywhere because we don't have the lot sizes anymore.
Right.
So hopefully, the clarification on this, we're still going to have, they're going to be long and sprawling, they're going to be kind of long and deep, just because of the way the links are laying out. But hopefully, can develop more product like that for existing community members who want that product.
Right.
They're so full of two stories. Right now, I think if you want to buy a Rambler in town, you've got a choice of three.
Okay. You know, and the other thing is, you're probably well aware of, you know, affordability indexes, and, you know, Builder Association did a study, and a third of building costs for a house today is due to, directly due to government regulation. I mean, I see the regulations that have been imposed on us over the last 10 years, and that's why I don't wish my kids to get into this industry, because it's just, you're so overregulated, and it's so costly, and it's such a burden, you know, so. And it starts right here, too, you know, with different regulations you guys are imposing and fees. So, you know, you got to, everybody's got to kind of manage, you know, as best as we can. And I know everybody wants the amenities, and they think the other guy's paying for it, but ultimately, you are, too.
What are specifically, maybe two or three of the biggest culprits from your point of view as a developer in terms of regulations?
Developer? I can't say from a development standpoint, because I haven't done a development in probably 15 years, I think, you would be better to explain something like that. I can just tell you from a building perspective, and we're seeing lot costs...
That's exactly what I meant. I meant from your point of view, in terms of the regulations that make building prohibitive, what are the...
Well, I mean, building permits. I mean, we used to pay, you know, four or five grand, and now I'm paying upwards to 20 grand for a building permit. I mean, that's a tax, you know?
To try to answer your question, that might be involved a little bit of that, working on a project south of here. Before the landowner gets paid, before the developer gets paid, there's roughly $63,000 in fees just to get the lot ready. So the whole concept of affordable housing is very, very difficult to achieve. And then when the builder comes in, like Dave, then he's going to the $20,000 and hook up his second whack on top of that. So you've got 80 grand in fees before the land even gets transferred. So the landowner's going to want to make a few dollars, the developer's going to make a few dollars. Suddenly, that lot, on minimum, is 120,000, just on the low end. The last lot that was transferred, that I was involved with in our community, was 250,000 for residential lot in the City of Victoria. So the whole concept of affordable housing, today's point is just challenging. So things get smaller, things get tighter, densities have to be greater. The old rule of thumb, which doesn't always apply today, is lot times four is your package price. So now, we're building, and we are building 800,000, 900,000 homes in our community right now, which is good unless you don't have that budget. And many of our residents don't necessarily have that budget. So I'm hoping in this city, we can maybe find some outside funding to help develop some more affordable housing at some point, because our community is desperately in need of it.
And that's what everybody's running into, you know, you just, you know, it's sad to see a lot of these people, you know, elderly people especially, you know, they don't have no place to go, you know? And it's just even the average worker nowadays, too, you know, getting started and with college debt, and, you know, it's tougher and tougher compared to, you know, back in the 70s, 80s. The economy was booming, inflation was going, so everybody was able to make some money and, you know, get appreciation in a house. And today's houses, like I say, there's a lot of building codes even that are ridiculous. Even the building officials will tell you in adding costs to the homes. So it's all the way through the whole process.
In the past three weeks, there's two 1,100-square-foot slab-on-grade resale townhomes that were built a number of years ago that just sold for 255 and 270. The cheapest house in town right now is 301, and that's a townhome. Market is definitely elevated in Victoria.
Right. Well, thank you. Any other questions?
I just, you know, knowing your land and the unique qualities of your land, and talking about, you know, what we're looking at tonight, I mean, it seemed to me a PUD would be a great option for developing your piece of property.
It probably is. I'm just not aware of that. That's D.R. Horton's, you know, thing, you know? And if you say that they're on board with that, that's fine. I just, you know, like I say, I don't want to find out that, well, hey, we didn't get platted here by May 28th, and, you know, you got to start from square one.
No.
You know, so that's the biggest thing that I'm concerned about, the way the language always is, you know, so, because it says approved, right, and what's approved. So...
Right.
Okay?
Anything else?
Thanks, Dave.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name's Peter Knebley with Golden Valley Land Company. We've done a couple of development projects in the City of Victoria, and we've got one ongoing right now, the Meadows of Wasserman Lake, which happens to be, I don't know if it was the first R2 project in the city, but it's an ongoing project. We're about half-built out. And that project is being built by Polty Homes and Country Joe Homes, the two, and they've had very good success selling the lots. Instead of 60-foot minimum, we ended up plating 66-foot minimum lots, because that's the requirement that the builder wanted, you know, for their market. And we haven't had, again, those are R2, and we haven't heard any complaints from the builder. We haven't heard any complaints from the homebuyers, or from the neighbors, or from the building inspectors, or anybody that that project has got issues in regards to lot sizes, side setbacks, anything that would tell me that there's an issue with your R2 zoning that needs this kind of a drastic change. So that's basically what I wanted to say. I'd kind of reiterate what Dave was saying, too, but the concern I have is two, and we've been working with staff... And we've been working with staff, you know, on this project and also the neighboring projects, two Daves on the Welter property on County Road eleven, Victoria Drive. And we've, we're kind of in the same issue that we've been through the concept plan approval, just working into preliminary plat approval. And we've got a large concern, the way this is worded, again, you know, to Paul's comment, that it says specifically that these are, it applies to any project that's not approved prior to May twenty-eighth. And I was a little, again, we've had a wonderful relationship with staff on our past projects. You know, we think staff does a wonderful job. But we are a little bit concerned or probably a little bit shocked to see this R-two change come through on a, uh, you know, we just happened to see it on an email that we get on planning, planning commission updates. And because we're in the middle of working on a project that would have R-two type lots on it, uh, we're also working on the second phase of the Wasserman project. That's got a small ten lot second phase. It's already zoned R-two. And we'd planned on, again, the R-two type single family lots for that phase. And then we find out two days ago that it's, uh, you can't do single family, you can only do twin homes. And again, it was a little shocking to us that we're active developers in the city and active landowners that have R-two property. And we have to find this information out by accident. So I think that was a little disconcerting from our point of view. Uh, but specifically to the, you know, to the ordinance itself, I think the biggest concern I've got again is, uh, uh, what Paul had talked about, that wording for any projects approved prior to May twenty-eighth, which is next week. And approved typically means final plat approved, which we would interpret that to be. And again, on the Welter property, we've got concept review. Uh, but on the Wasserman project, we've got R-two zoning. And that's all we've got. We're gonna be submitting a project. And we think at a minimum, we would recommend, you know, again respectfully to the city council and to the staff, that they change that requirement to say that any project that's been submitted or, um, for review by the city, you know, maybe prior to May twenty-eighth or June tenth, or whatever that date is, not a project approved. Because that's not, it's not only not fair to the landowners or the developers in the city to be kind of blindsided by that sudden change. I think it's just not fair to do that. And I, I would respectfully again ask that they change the wording in that, if this is gonna go through, that they change that to any projects that's been submitted to the city, not approved project. And just kinda secondarily, um, under the, well, under the R-two zoning, we would, um, I would make, I just was thinking about it when I was sitting out here. We work in other cities that have similar kinda zoning and almost any developer that we work with or builder that we work with are looking for, again, smaller lots, more affordable products. And there's been, almost every project we look at now, the builder wants to do it, um, you know, villa type component, which is on a fifty foot lot, some are even on a forty foot lot. And we just did a project in the city of Golden Valley. And they had a similar ordinance. They had the R-one, R-two. R-one was their eighty-five foot lots. Yours would be the eighty. But their R-two was similar to yours. It was gonna be, or what's proposed was gonna be a, um, was only twin homes. And we came in and, you know, their ordinances were written, I don't know, thirty or thirty or forty years ago. And there's very few twin home projects that are, um, that are being developed now, at least from our experience and the builders that we talked to. A builder would rather build a, you know, if you take a twin home, you know, that's thirty or forty feet on each side, you know, and to split it, you've got a villa product, you know, on a fifty foot lot. So we went to that art city where we were working. And we said, why don't you change your ordinance to allow, in the R-two zoning where you allow twin homes, why not allow fifty foot villa homes in that same zoning? Because you end up with the exact same density. And you end up with a product that people want. And, you know, from the street view, you can have variety of architecture. It's not gonna say that it's gonna be any more monotonous, which is the wording in this ordinance, than any other product. And they did change that. They changed their ordinance on R-two to allow, in addition to the twin homes, fifty foot single family. And, you know, fifty foot villa product. So I think you're accomplishing the same thing. But you're not restricting that option and pushing that into a PUD when you allow it upfront. So that would be the only other recommendation. It probably doesn't apply to what we're doing. We would still request that, um, you know, these two projects that we're working with be kinda grandfathered in or have it reworded that it allows projects that have been submitted to the staff to go through under the existing zoning, if this gets approved that way. So, thank you for your time. And appreciate that.
Give your comments.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
So those are the only two in the audience. So I will make a motion that we close.
I have a question. Um, how many, um, how many projects are in the pipeline that are potentially affected by, I mean, at some point you have to tear the bandaid off, right?
We'll continue. We're gonna, we're gonna discuss this. I was gonna close the portion of the public hearing. So I'm just gonna make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We'll close that. Now we'll continue that discussion. Sorry to interrupt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so there are, there, we're, we're describing sort of pending projects that are gonna be in this little shoulder time period. I guess I have two questions, um, for staff. One is, sort of the critical nature of this change with respect to some of these sort of pending projects. And what, what is the urgency for making this change today? Uh, what are, let me put it this way, what are the downsides to sort of giving a little bit more notice with this? What are the potential downsides to doing that, first of all? And then how many, how many potential projects are there like this that are kind of in this, um, no man's land, so to speak?
So really, the only developments, there's three developments that we're right now working with developers, well, actually four developments. There is Lake Town, but they're developing single family homes and townhomes with, that's Lennar. Uh, D.R. Horton's looking at the Meat Cutters site. They still don't know what type of units they wanna do. And then these, there's these two developments. So those are the ones that are out there. I think staff would recommend making the changes now, so that when developers come three months now down the road, they know what the, um, anticipations are, expectations. But we're trying to work with the current developers, as you can see by, have them allow the, do the PUD provision. The ten lots that are already zoned, I think we can take a look at that and see if, if properties already zoned are too, that they would be able to fall under what the standards are now. So.
What I've seen of the communities, maybe, maybe, these comments I think were well pointed. What I've seen of the communities that everyone is up against in similar situations, what if we modified this and anything started on or before such a date would be considered? But it has to be approved within a reasonable amount of time, maybe it's twelve months. It must be developed within thirty-six months. And if they don't meet those criterias, then it goes back to the current R-one, R-two zoning we created today. That way it allows whatever behavior is going on in the marketplace to take place, but also doesn't leave a project sitting open-ended for five to ten years.
Um, we could take a look at that. Um, again, the, the developments that they were talking about that are on County Road eleven didn't meet the R-two zoning districts anyways. And that's why we're recommending having a PUD. And then the, the development around Wasserman Lake that's already zoned R-two, um, if you took a, if you drove through it, it doesn't have eight foot setbacks that the R-two zoning district has now. And so it doesn't feel tight. And that's what the things of the city council wanted to get away from. And it, I even looked at some of the surveys. And I didn't see any of the surveys on file that had these eight foot setbacks on both sides. They may have it on one side, but then they had plenty of space on the other side. So that was the concern of the city council during, through the concept plans and then having another study session, is that eight foot side yard setbacks are not appropriate for a single family house. That's what we're trying to fix.
So staff, the four projects you cited, if we make this change today, what impact will it have on the four projects you guys are currently working on today?
It won't. Um, except for the one thing that we'd like to take a look at is the zone, the property that's already zoned R-two that Peter Knably mentioned, uh, that they'd like to plat. And I think we can change the language so that that plat could be followed under the, the, the small lot, single family lots.
And how many, how many lots roughly is that?
I think ten. So it's very insignificant.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I have one more question, sticking back to your, beginning your comments you were pointing. Is there any reason we can't add villas to R-two? Since that is a trending product right now and it typically will go in a fifty foot lot?
Again, um, a lot of times it's the, the height. And so, I mean, we could do that with a smaller height. Um, the concern is if you allow villas, a two-story villa with eight foot setback, then you're getting into the single family home again. So.
Where does the typical villa product in today's market is generally, our twin homes today's market is split in half. They're generally single level, walkouts, flats, slab on grade. Where does that product fit today?
Well, so the, the nice thing about a duplex is that you can do shared driveways. Uh, one of the constant complaints we get with the villas in Whispering Hills, which is the small lots, is you have driveway after driveway after driveway, and you have no place to put the snow. So you have all the people putting their snow on the street, the street cleaners coming through, putting it back in the, in the streets. If you drive through, it is just side, or driveway after driveway after driveway. Whereas a duplex, townhomes, one, the townhomes are private drives. And the duplexes, you can have combined driveways, as I mentioned, which would help.
So is the community, are we discouraging the detached villa product?
Not necessarily. I think those are the, the right design for it. Um, but I think it's, um, you have to look at it. So making sure that it, it doesn't, it has the grain space for the store, snow storage, or it has combined driveways.
So if I was a developer coming in our community, wanted to do a villa type project, it'd be a PUD?
Most likely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are, are we, we, just as, just in general terms, if we look at this sort of strip going down Victoria Drive, is this the kind of development we think we can expect? Are these relatively high density, um, PUD neighborhoods going all the way down until it gets commercial at the bottom? Is that kind of what we're looking at for that part of the city?
Not necessarily.
What, what the development, I mean, I hear, I mean, villas, I'm sure are an in-demand product, but they're, they're not the only in-demand product. There are other types of neighborhoods, other type of houses, people that, people wanna buy. But is that, it seems like that's kind of where this area is going. Is that inaccurate?
No, um, the D.R. Horton concept that came to the, in front of the city council had a mixture of townhomes, villa products, and then regular single family lots. And that's something that we would encourage, is that mixture of all the developments. Uh, just north of it, um, the Schmieck property, that's guided for low density residential for more, so more single family than the townhomes. Um, there's a little area that's guided for high density. So along County Road eleven, if you just went from Marsh Lake Road down to the railroad tracks, it's a variety of single family, townhomes, and more villa type.
Thoughts, questions?
Just to tag onto that, typically speaking, when we're laying out a development, I think if you look at our twenty forty comp plan, you'll find a major corridor. Peter, you'll have your commercial, your high density, and slowly steps up to the low density, single family to kind of buffer that. So it's not uncommon to see a higher dense, more dense product near major corridors in between single family and commercial. It's following typical trends.
And that piece of property, it, as you, it, obviously, but it gets very, as you, as you move in from Guernsey Road, Victoria Road, it, it's, it's so rural. Very, you know, it's set up, but it's guided right now into twenty forty comp plan for those bigger lots. But along that edge, like John said, you're gonna have a little more density.
Well, we've had a good discussion. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval to city council, an amendment to city Victoria zoning code, section twenty-four one, low density residential R-one, and section twenty-four, R-two, single family residential, R-two, as written.
Any thought to, to add anything regarding?
Timing.
Timing with the pieces?
Based on the response we've gotten from staff, I think it has minimal effect, if any effect at all. We maybe wanna look at the ten lot development in Wasserman, but I'm not sure how we address that in the motion. I don't think we have a great solution for that as of the moment.
No, we'll, we will work with the developer to make sure it's, when it goes to the city council, it doesn't affect that development, that ten lot development.
All right, as long as it's in there. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 opposed? There ain't none, the motion carries.
Did Mary Joel second it?
Aye, no.
Laura, I didn't.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
I thought, I thought it was a female. We have a.
Should've been a little louder.
Peter. Pardon me?
It's.
We can tell you.
Repose to go June tenth. You're welcome.
Okay. Looks like the next item for discussion is downtown design guidelines. Patrick?
Chair, members of the planning commission. So the downtown design guidelines was one of the goals that the planning commission discussed to try to achieve in two thousand and nineteen. And one of the main reasons was of the, uh, potential development of the thirteen and a half acres west of downtown. So we wanted to be ahead of that developer or any of that, those discussions. Um, also, if you look at the, and Mark Calzis, our planning consultant, will go through this as well. But if you look at what we have in place now, we have the design standards that are in the zoning ordinance that are more prescriptive, but there's no, uh, drawings or diagrams or pictures to kind of explain what they are. Then we have our downtown master plan that was approved in two thousand and sixteen. And they have some design guidelines, but they're not referenced in any requirements. So, uh, with that, I'm gonna turn over to Mark. And he's got a little presentation to give into a little more detail.
Hello, Mark.
Hello. Chair, Commissioner.
Calzis, I'm the consultant of the city, doing some planning consultant. I think I've seen most of you before, but some of you are new faces, so thank you for having me tonight. Uh, Pat and I have been, uh, talking about the downtown design standards and looking at, kind of what the city has right now and then what the, um, what, what maybe we could do to the, the standards, as well as to the city's ordinance to, one, integrate, uh, kind of several documents. And then I think make clearer what the city has as it relates to downtown design standards, uh, moving forward. Especially in light of, uh, some of the work we're trying to do on, uh, the thirteen and a half acre parcel that the city owns and kind of getting ourselves ready uh, for that parcel, as well as just other development, redevelopment within, uh, the downtown and, and this area, uh, proper. Do I need to do something special to get on?
Dias, electric?
I think we got you.
Did it work? Oh, let me look. Here comes me. Just look and make sure I'm.
Sure it's not Dias. Well, what's PC then?
Usually people just plug it in and it says all.
All right.
Wrote it.
I did last time.
I know.
Well.
Help is on his way.
The Jedi's on his way.
All right.
Is that in?
Oh. So it's flashing? Can you put it back to the lectern?
Yep.
So let's see, something's there.
How many times you go to a meeting? Out of ten, does it always work just like that?
It's so.
That's optimistic.
It's crazy. Twenty nineteen.
I've been in this system.
We can load it up here too.
Okay.
Do you have it?
No, if you, do you have the memory sticker?
Can I plug in over there?
Hang on a second.
Plug it in over there, but you have to run back.
We'll sit out there, you just come up there.
Yeah, there we go. Sorry about that. I, I thought we were gonna be really, really slick since we got it to go the last time.
Just be one moment.
You have it. Oh, there it goes. There it is. See? Yeah, we just need. All right, there we go.
PowerPoint has arrived, and it's gone.
There we go.
Be a short enough.
Okay, so what I want to do is just do a little brief overview of the history of kind of downtown master planning, downtown design standards, and then talk to you about some of the, some of the nuances of the city's design guidelines, and then also zoning ordinance relating to architectural design standards, and then how do we go forward from here? So just a brief history of the downtown design stand, standards, going back to kind of a time period that we have some documentation on the downtown. So city adopted downtown master plan actually in 1987, with, which was kind of the first foray for the city into looking at this area specifically and planning for its future as it related to kind of an overall master plan for the downtown. In 1997, the city adopted design guidelines then that essentially supplemented the downtown master plan and provided clarification and direction on that downtown plan, as well as updated the downtown master plan, but, but more so it focuses on some of the guidelines and design standards that would be required for downtown redevelopment moving forward. In 2007, the city adopted architectural standards within the city's zoning ordinance. So this was different than how the city had handled downtown design standards historically. Historically, the city had adopted a design manual, and that manual was referenced and essentially adopted by reference into the city's zoning ordinance. The city in 2007 went a little bit further than that, and they adopted downtown architectural standards, which are your, essentially your current standards in the ordinance today, but they adopted them in the zoning ordinance text itself, rather than, rather than by reference in a separate document. So it was a little bit different than how it had been done. In 2016, the city then adopted an updated downtown master plan along with some updated downtown design guidelines. And so those are kind of the current standards that the city uses today, but that master plan and those guidelines were not adopted by reference by the city's zoning ordinance and are really not integrated into the city's zoning ordinance. So what we have today is we have a zoning ordinance that has architectural design standards, and we have a adopted master plan with design guidelines, but they don't necessarily fully align, and one's not in the ordinance and one is in the ordinance. So there's a little bit of a disconnect in just what's on the books today. And so with that, just kind of a brief overview of what the city did in 1987, was essentially this plan updated in 1997. But the downtown master plan, this is the historic document that the city initially used to kind of start the process of converting what was kind of, kind of industrial slash old downtown into a lot of what we see today. This was the general guideline as this plan was utilized. With that then, in 1997, the city adopted downtown design guidelines. This isn't, in total, I didn't replicate all of the design guidelines, but this image was actually a really good illustration within the design guideline manual, which spoke to various aspects of the, of the plan, and then talks about how do you go from plan to realization of redevelopment in the downtown, utilizing certain architectural standards, architectural features, and then other site and streetscape elements to try to bolster and then enhance the overall downtown design. And you can see, if you were to really get into reading all of the various callouts on this, those various callouts were then replicated in a text format within that design guideline manual. So that manual was utilized by the city for about ten years, or maybe even a little bit longer as it related to the downtown's design guide, as well as it, it provided examples of architectural styles, colors, lights, landscaping, streets, streetscape features, things of that nature. In 2007, the city adopted standards within the downtown, or within its current zoning ordinance under the guise of the Central Business District zoning ordinance. So it was a land use category that the city had, long had on the books, but it then integrated into the ordinance text itself, architectural standards. Those standards looked at various aspects of site design, site layout, building design, building architecture, and then various aspects of building design. It looked at building facades utilizing existing design elements. That was a theme that was, that's written into our ordinance right now, where it says that you should look at existing architecture and take examples of existing architecture or elements of the existing architecture and incorporate that into new design. It provided for very specific setbacks related to new buildings. So it says in that, in our ordinance, sixty-five percent of the facade, it needs to be built to the property line, meaning that you'd build it right on the, the property line for sixty-five percent of the front facade, and then thirty-five percent could be setback. It could be door openings or entrances into a, into a building, courtyard, seating area, things of that nature. Building width, it, it has a requirement that requires buildings to be individually compartmentalized. And what I mean by that is if a building's over forty-five feet in width, then you have to start breaking up the front facade of that building, but it's very specific to that forty-five feet, and then breaking up the building. It talks about the various levels of a building. So on ground level, it, it states that differentiation needs to occur between the ground level and the upper level. So that's the first floor level, second or third floor levels. It talks about on the ground level, a certain amount of window opening. So fifty percent of the front facade of a building has to have windows and openings, and then at least thirty percent of the area of the front facade, kind of face of a building, has to be openings or windows. It also talks about roof design, flat or pitched roofs are permitted. If it's flat, then the architecture needs to incorporate parapets or cornices or some feature similar, similar to that into the front facade. Building materials, it lists out in much more detail all of the building materials permitted and provides essentially percentages of each. Permitted building materials generally are bricks, stucco, precast, panels, stone, and glass. And then there's percentages that are allowed of some other kind of supplementar, supplementary or secondary materials. Building colors, it provides for subtle, neutral, or muted, muted colors. And then it provides a palette of recommended colors, generally earth-toned colors, which is a fairly consistent standard. And then it talks about building lighting. It says gooseneck style lighting is encouraged. If you were to look at the ninety-seven design guideline manual and the 2007 design standards incorporated into the zoning ordinance, you'd see a lot of overlap in those standards, and you'd see themes that were carried forward between the two documents. One is then now been written into the city's ordinance with very little illustration or kind of examples, and one was a, a much more kind of colorful manual that provided more examples and generalizations than it did very specific architectural requirements. In 2016, the city updated the downtown master plan, as well as provided for additional architectural design guidelines through the, the downtown master plan and, and these guidelines that were adopted. And so this is the, essentially the plan that was adopted, and you can see that this plan now incorporates the thirteen-and-a-half acre site to the west into the overall downtown master plan. And then it provides illustrative examples of various aspects of the plan and provides some general land uses within the plan, the colors on the plan representing those general land uses. It provided for vision and then guiding principles as well within that document. The document also went a step further and provided for architectural design guidelines. So again, these being guidelines, not ordinance, they're suggestions that the city has. But again, this document's not incorporated by reference into this current city ordinance, but it provides scale and mass, which are, which are mostly consistent with the standards that are adopted in the city's ordinance. It talks about material palette, form and facade, and then site design guidelines. And then on the right-hand side, it gives some examples of this, not this, as it relates to how you would orient a building to, say, a street frontage versus, you know, having it setback. You'd have it set forward along the street frontage, and then how those, how that kind of public front face relates to the street. So it gives some illustrated, illustrative examples of those ideas. So why are we kind of going through this and why are we talking about it? What we wanted to talk to you about is one, we wanted to give just a general history so we could have an understanding or a baseline from which we could work off of. So we wanted to talk about kind of how we got to where we are, and then talk about what we think, what we think we need to do to kind of move forward. The 2016 architectural design guidelines, they're not referenced. So right now, we have a really nice document, but it's not referenced in the ordinance. And so there's a little bit of a disconnect with that. The architectural standards in the ordinance and those in the guidelines, they're not perfectly aligned. So there are some variations to those, and we think it would be important that we have kind of a unified guideline and ordinance, or what I'll talk about is have a ordinance that references a unified guideline, if that makes sense. In the current ordinance, we have no illustrations or examples, so it's, it's just kind of a written text. We think it would be helpful as the city moves forward, just for everybody's understanding, the city, anybody who's gonna develop or redevelop, that there are more illustrations and examples identifying kind of what the city's vision is for various standards that we would be looking at. So maybe that's the key, is that. The. I think it's gonna pop back. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep talking and it, it should come back, I hope. Maybe I can just disconnect and reconnect again. The architectural standards in the ordinance are regulated with limited flexibility. And what I mean by that is our current ordinance has a lot of shells. So the ordinance that we have, even though we have a limited number of standards, it says you shall have X, Y, or Z. You shall be required to have various aspects of the architectural design standards. And because of that, it somewhat limits flexibility, but it also creates some rigidity in the ordinance that, that makes it difficult to respond to kind of unique situations or unique maybe architecture or styles within that. And then the standards and guidelines that we have now, both the guidelines and the standards, do not provide a background or what I would call context, and/or maybe even kind of recommended treatments of various aspects of architecture that I think would help get us to kind of a realization of our desired vision. So a lot of times when we have examples or illustrations within the ordinance, those are, those are helpful, but what's also helpful is to identify ways that you could enhance architecture and give actual kind of recommended treatments, recommended colors, recommended, just various architectural aspects that maybe would help kind of drive design in, in a certain way or in a certain manner. So we've identified these limitations within the existing ordinance. What we're recommending, what I can see. Let me, let me try one more time, if I can, just to pop this back up. It seems like this cord's really touchy. Try. Maybe it's my cord, I don't know.
Planning commission cannot make requisitions for better cords and technology, so.
We need the Jedi. Yeah. I shouldn't have touched it.
I think it's just your computer.
You think it is?
I do, because the last time, your computer didn't want to play nice either.
I know, so it's, it's really possible that it is my computer.
Do we allow residents to approach the bench?
Musical, musical computer?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it. Coming back anytime soon, I don't know, but I, I think you're right. Maybe it's time for another computer. Yeah, it just doesn't. Doesn't like me. Sure. All right, let's try one more, one more way. I apologize.
There it is.
Yeah, see that? So yeah. All right. Okay. All right, so a couple of things that, that Pat and I have talked about are what we were thinking. One, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. We have some standards that we can utilize as a baseline. I think they're fairly vetted standards that we've utilized for a number of years in the city and have garnered, I think, pretty good results. So we're not saying that we need to reinvent all the standards or reinvent the wheel on, on various aspects of the standards. We would utilize 2016 guidelines as, as kind of the base point for trying to project this forward. What we would want to do, though, is establish a design guideline manual and adopt it by reference into the existing zoning ordinance. So we would take the zoning ordinance architectural design standards out of the ordinance, adopt a manual that has all of the standards as, as well as illustrative examples, more context, more background on design, and then adopt that by reference in the ordinance so that that becomes then the rule of the land, so to speak, of how we would apply to various redevelopment or new development. We would remove language such as shell where appropriate and, and, and talk about things like should as a way to try to allow some flexibility within the standards, but also drive kind of certain design aspects. But maybe there's more than one way to come up with a, a solution to a design problem. And then, but within that, one thing that I, we, we would have measurable design criteria. So we'd have some way to measure whether or not they're meeting or not meeting the design criteria so that it, it wouldn't become so subjective. There would be objectivity to the ordinance still, but just not maybe as rigid as what we currently have within the ordinance. And then talking about how we would kind of provide more illustrative recommendations and/or context to kind of design ideas and design solutions, we would, we would look to some of the existing examples that are out there. One of the, the areas, I know Pat's talked about previously, I think all of you have a copy, but the, the book, The Language of Design, is a really good kind of baseline manual that provides a lot of solutions to, and also brings attention to certain aspects of design and how do you, how do you achieve certain aspects of design. And so utilizing something with kind of a similar theme, where you could see good and bad kind of comparatively next to each other, would be how we'd kind of move from what we've got to, to what I think would be, what we'd be recommending for the city to have, so. So that's kind of a, in a nutshell, kind of a little bit of a history. I didn't go too deep, and if there was other questions on that, I'd be happy to talk more about what's, what's there today and how we got there. And then we wanted to kind of introduce this tonight, see if we were on the same page, see if the planning commission had questions, comments, thoughts, discussions about that process and about what, what we've got and kind of what we think we should have. And then as we move forward, we'd bring back to you some of the work then. We'd start to, to do some of the work to kind of put this together. So, Pat, I don't know if you had anything to add to that, or?
No, I think part of the process will be asking some pertinent questions for the planning commission when we bring this forward. But I think the main thing is just to make sure that you guys agree with the process, not reinventing the wheel, but adding more diagrams. And then having it outside the zoning ordinance is a big thing, be its own separate document.
Can I ask a question? This may be a little bit in the weeds for the purposes of this discussion, but one of the design things that I notice when I drive through Victoria is the nature of the signs on the buildings. So when you come into Victoria and you look to the right, you see a big red backlit, safe, not Safco, State Farm, whatever, insurance, whatever.
Sure.
Insurance agent up there, big red sign lit up. But as you drive down to the left, you see Noble Line and those, because these are externally lit, sort of very elegant.
Gooseneck.
Gooseneck lighting. But it's not just the nature of the gooseneck, it's the fact that the, the sign on the building is externally lit versus inter. But it's not just the nature of the goose neck, it's the fact that the, the sign on the building is externally lit versus internally lit. There's a big difference aesthetically between those two things. So i- if we wanted to have a discussion about the nature of that type of signage in, in downtown area, how would that play out through, that's just one example. That's kind of one of the glaring things that I've always thought of, but how can that, is that, can, can we, do we have in the, in the plan, the ability to say one's, one type of signage is okay and one type of like, isn't?
We, we do have the ability to do that. One of the things that I kind of envisioned was more of a higher level discussion, something that wouldn't really affect the, the current business owners, um, that we wouldn't have to have a big discussion with the current business owners downtown. Something like that, Mark, correct me if wrong, it's something we could look into, but that's a bigger discussion with making sure that all the property owners are comfortable because that does affect them.
So today though, if, if a new restaurant went in, there is a new restaurant, they've got a lovely sign. But i- if a new restaurant went in today or something like that, is it, is it purely their choice what type of external sign that they have? Can they put the red backlit sign up, uh, or the externally lit sign like Noble Lion has, is that their option?
Internally illuminated signs are permitted in Victoria. I know they're not permitted in Excelsior where I used to work. They were all externally illuminated.
And that's kind of the nature of towns like Excelsior, right? And, and maybe, maybe, maybe like Victoria as well, but.
I believe the, I believe if I look back, I think the ninety-seven guidelines had no external illumination. I don't know where that changed, but Victoria, I think, used to have that same standard.
So nothing barring right now, nothing barring externally lit signs.
Right, so I think that's, I think that's fair game though for the discussion. Right now in the design standards, we rep, in our ordinance, I should say, we reference the sign ordinance. So in our design guidelines, in the, in the ordinance, it says signs shall be in accordance with section, chapter, whatever. In the guidelines, so we do talk about lighting a little bit. So I think it's fair game though to say that's something that you'd look at along with these design guidelines. If you were to adopt a new standard, you wouldn't necessarily affect existing because they'd be grandfathered in. You'd be projecting that for new development or redevelopment, and I think you could, you could think about that.
I'm just curious, it sounds like a great idea, but where does, how does this start? Is it, is it internally with us saying we need to improve this, or are we hearing this from the developers that we need to tighten this up? Just curious.
No, it was something that I noticed that it had three different design guidelines and three different documents. And they're sometimes conflicting, uh, trying to tighten that up. And then also because of the downtown, uh, west coming in, that we wanted to be ahead of them and try to come up with some guidelines that made sense for everybody.
Pat, this is just for discussion only, right, no action taken.
Correct, yeah, this is just very preliminary discussion, make sure at the high level, making sure we're all on the same page of the direction we're going before we spend more time on developing the guidelines and bringing them back to you for your review and discussion.
All right, thank you. I'd love to bring the illustrations in, so we get visual identification. I'm assuming that no matter what happens moving forward, across this panel before it moves forward, come to the commission. So we'll have a chance to look at the design concept, to where it's gonna go and how does it tie in? We can talk about signage, we can talk about signage, we can talk about material.
Yeah.
Much like we did the flats.
Yeah, you'd be the driver.
One item that I'm kind of curious about, it says parking strategies on the, um,
Sure.
On our agenda here. So I'm just curious, what is involved with parking strategies? Because I have some opinions on that and I just, I'm kind of, I don't know how deep.
In the, in the manual, so in the design guideline from two thousand and sixteen, there was a section on parking strategy, which was one of the elements of the architectural standards, but it talks about strategy on parking, but it doesn't talk about, say, parking. Yeah, like counts or guidelines.
Okay.
So I.
What I thought, okay. So it's kind of like the angles in which the, the stalls are striped and how many?
I think it's more parking behind, not, I, I don't know, I didn't, I guess I didn't look at that specifically, but I, is it in?
No, but so typically.
It wasn't on my slide, I don't think.
Right, so typically when, uh, design guidelines address parking, it's not necessarily the number, because that's more of a zoning ordinance regulation. It's more about the location of it, if it's behind a building, on the side of a building, and if it's screened with a hedge or a fence, those type of things.
You know, one thing that is going to be pretty important when we, when we think about the thirteen acres is, you know, if these first level spaces are going to go into, transfer into retail long term, how do, how do these spaces, um, how do they convey a commercial look with the design criteria long term? If that is the way it does unfold eventually, you know, I think that's just a really important aspect of this.
I think it's a really good point, because right now our standards want to address kind of conversion of residential to retail and that's a reality in the next phase of that, so addressing that in the, in the standard is probably a good idea. Yeah.
But using the Bavarian theme that, uh, that you had, that you had used, and then for the thirteen point six, whatever, whatever does transpire with that, um, at the, at, at the same time, but that as a, as an overall standard, uh, and, and kind of tightening everything up. And that seems to be the theme at the same time, is that we really do have to tighten things up. And there, there is some, there's, there's some businesses that will probably have to, you know, we, um, you know, the city does necessarily want to force anyone to do something, but we, but we sure as heck want to recommend that we tighten things up because it's very, very visible. And, and it's kind of interesting when you hear from other people, you know, their, their thoughts on, you know, how Victoria looks and how downtown Victoria looks. And, and, and I think, I think an overall cleanup, um, from, from my perspective. Uh, and, and I think, I think along the guidelines of Bavarian theme, which, um, you know, works, I think probably works real well, so. You know, I, I think the, um, I think the standards, I think the standards would have to be tightened up, uh, from, from my, my viewpoint.
Sure. Yeah.
I agree, you showed it at the workshop, I think you showed that, uh, in your presentation when we had the city council planning commission, because you, it stands out to me, John, we've been approaching Victoria from the west, or excuse me, from the east coming west, you know, we see townhouses.
Yeah.
And then they're not much of a berm, it's kind of out there.
Right.
On the, uh, south side, whereas now we have this potential with the thirteen acres coming in from the west. That's gonna, that's gonna be Victoria, that's gonna be the first thing people see.
Yeah.
And. That's very representative.
Yeah, for sure, it's gonna be important that that's.
Yeah, that becomes a gateway, really.
Well, it will be.
Yeah, north and west.
In, in a lot of different ways, but especially that first sight that you see.
Right.
Good timing.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and I, and I think, I think overall, you know, for, you know, for example, um, for future development, it, it, it sets the theme, you know, as to what the community really is. And, and if it's a, if it's, you know, not to, you know, not to call out something like Richfield, for example. But, you know, there's, there's a certain theme that, that one thinks of when they look at a Richfield. And, and, and I think we have the opportunity to, uh, to develop a theme for, for Victoria in the, in the downtown, in this downtown area. So I think that's, I think that's very important, that we, uh, that we, we set that standard.
What gets me nervous when I think about designing the thirteen acres is the configuration of the buildings and how the glass percentage gets relayed on the different layouts. Let's say you have a retailer that they want a configuration of the building a certain way, and they have the ability to put all their glass in the front. And so I know, I know here we have language here that says that a minimum of twelve percent of upper story facade. Basically, there is some language here that allows for windows and things like that, but there are many retailers that come in and try to adjust these specifications to fit their business and the, the building. And, um, you know, these buildings, the way they're designed, they're going to be here a long, long time. I mean, this, these buildings, they're, they're not going anywhere. I mean, they're beautiful buildings and that's kind of our goal, so just getting it right and the particular buildings and the viewpoints is going to be a really important consideration.
Yeah, retailers come and go.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and it, and it really is a, a three to four generation, uh, plan at the same time. Or a life expectancy of.
Yes.
Of the building, so that really, really creates the, the need.
Is there, um, and you guys are professionals at this, uh, I have no data to support what I'm about to say sadly, but, uh, my guess is that, um, to your point, John, to sort of tightening up and, and moving towards a theme and this kind of thing actually helps downtown areas perform better. Excelsior's probably a great example, right?
Yep.
Some people might say, well, to, to my little bugaboo with external, with internally lit signs in a town like this, that might be an overreach, yet that works really well for that, for that town, for what they're trying to accomplish in terms of look and feel. So my question is, can, is there some data or some articles or some, uh, some, some data that you guys could bring to the table that says, hey, listen, when, when towns sort of take a little bit more of an intentional approach to these, to the design, the businesses, even though maybe the, the big red sign can't be there anymore, but that business will actually perform as well, if not better, right? So is there, so I guess I'd just throw that out, if there's data, you can bring the data on that.
One of their main reasons.
Maybe that's, maybe that's not a true statement.
No, 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 that, one of the main reasons you do that is to make the downtown more attractive, to attract people, to get more customers, all the businesses. And there is data out there and, and one of the things that, um, I think we would like to do as part of the design manual or the design guidelines, when Mark is talking about more background information, is to explain why we have these design guidelines in the first place. Right now, that's not explained anywhere in the documents that we have.
I think, I think that's really important, I think if, the extent to which that could be sort of infographic, you know, that, that when this happens, here's the result, right? Uh, as opposed to, you know, a bunch of people from the neighborhood are making up rules.
Right, right, yep, yeah.
I think you're very well pointed.
Oh, I'm so sorry, go ahead.
Just to remind everybody, neighboring communities, Excelsior's done a fantastic job. McConia, thank you, they've done a good job, even with their split, if you think about this, the downtown is still vibrant. Even with the new retail stuff that's moved up the highway. We're going to be experiencing the same thing in the near future. We're still going to try to maintain this vibrant, lively downtown, but we have to with the culture experience visually, how well it flows, how well it feels, nice boutique restaurants and shopping to protect this from not becoming, um, a neighboring community has made it very difficult with the ingress, egress, how traffic flows, and it's really shut down the neighboring community. And I think they've lost a lot of vibrancy to the northern retail stuff because of some decisions that, we can probably do better learning from their experiences.
To Laura's point, you can't, can't really go backwards.
Right.
And if, it's really hard to go backwards if you, if you let the dogs out, so to speak.
I think this is fantastic. Maintain accessibility, maintain the traffic flow, maintain the parks, the pavilions, the walkability. There's experience, the lighting that keeps it walkable and fun.
Yeah, I, I think it also, to, to all of your points, I think having that unified vision and then very, a, a, a very, um, um, uh, specific document that prescribes why and how and what you want is actually helpful to development, um, to the development world as well, because then they have a clear idea of what it is that you're asking for and what kind of you see as kind of a future. So i- it, it helps on both sides. It helps the city realize its vision, but it also helps people understand it so that they can then decide if they want to be a part of it and how they want to be a part of it, so. And, and to the point on kind of the empirical data for character, there is actually empirical, there, there, there's data and statistics that show, um, kind of high character, high quality, high, um, standard communities have higher value, right? So the, their downtowns, their buildings, their properties, and then the community outline has a higher value because of that, you know, downtown core. And I think Victoria's been, you know, for thirty years now has kind of said, this is what we want to see. We want a small town character, um, high quality, high amenity downtown that's vibrant, that's unique, boutique, not commercialized, and, and they've, you know, gone from really nothing to what you see here, so, yeah.
One element that's going to be kind of something we'll have to think through is, there's a, there's going to be, I anticipate a heavy mix of residential in this development.
Yeah.
And so with lighting, is that going to be a problem? Light casting into, you know, residents' windows, something that has to be thought through.
Sure.
Those are important aspects.
Sure.
Yeah, it's true, it's an issue right now, Minneapolis converting, uh, to LED, you know? Yeah, all these things are gonna, could get them out early.
Yeah.
I'm not going to contradict what you said, but my grandmother would say the proof's in the pudding. And to just take it back to that sign, it's interesting that nobody knows what the name is on that red sign, but everybody knows the Noble Lion, so there's something to be said for that.
Yeah, yeah.
Proof's in the pudding.
Non, uh, um, having non, non internally illuminated lighting is, is fairly standard.
Yeah.
For mo- many small towns. You, you do though, um, you do get a huge pushback from your business community on non internally illuminated signage.
That's why you need the data that shows.
Right.
Actually, it's counterintuitive to them.
Right, it's counterintuitive because just like you said, you know what the other sign says, you don't know what the other, so, yeah.
Most all national retailers, they have to have the channel at letters, they won't do the goose neck.
That, they'll tell you that.
Yeah.
But that's not true. I, I can, I can show you a Target and a McDonald's with goose neck lighting, so.
The town I come from.
They'll tell you that, I can show you Walgreens with goose neck lighting, so.
There's a Starbucks in the heart of the little town that I grew up in, Coast Cannon Beach. It's a wood carved wood sign with externally, they fought over it. And, because the city doesn't allow any internally illuminated signage.
Yeah.
You'll see it, you go there. So I, I don't think that's.
Yeah, they get over it, they hate it.
They're looking for the value.
Yeah, they dislike it and they won't, they won't start the conversation with that they can do it. But I, they do do it, you just have to be firm on your standards, so.
But again, without being dictatorial on the whole thing at the same time, but here is our standards. You know, and, and again, you know, we don't, we don't want to come across as dictatorial, but doggone it, here's our standards. And, and there's, you know, that's what we stick to. And, and, and I think that, I think it's that easy.
Would, um, lighting, uh, not just signage, but like lighting, parking lot lighting and property lighting be in this as well?
Yeah, so in, in the standard, we do have building lighting right now. I think it's, it's wholly appropriate that you'd have parking lot and, um, signage, lighting specifically, and maybe even signage, right? A lot of cities in their design manuals have signage as a part of that. Specific to your downtown, different than what you have in the other parts of your ordinance, but something to look at. I don't know, I don't know how far into that you go, but, um, for sure the lighting aspect is, is something you could do because we have very specific design lighting in the downtown right now, so.
The town that I came from had a lot of mixed use along the primary road, roads going through town. And so residential mixed commercial, the commercial was more a house that was converted to a boutique life place or a State Farm even. They had one sign design that went, was allowed for those commercial establishments. And it was a nice colonial looking, uh, post, not hanging from the building itself. And it easily identified the commercial businesses and yet it was attractive. And it made the mixed land use very, very nice. It wasn't monotonous, even though it was the same style of design.
Sure, yeah, yeah, it's interesting. I think I know where you're talking. Illinois, Barrington, yeah. I do, yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
But it is, it is, one, just one more comment on this. So, you know, the, the other gentleman had stated that, that, you know, the parks, um, they're, you know, they're really not used. But, but the, the families that are buying are, are, are looking at the parks and it's one of the, it's one of the, um, amenities and, and it's one of the requirements that they have. And, and, and if it's only perception, um, perception rules. And, and so, you know, I think, I think the overall, you know, the overall image is the, is part of what we should be doing, does that make sense?
It's also not, it's also was not, in my view, a correct statement. I mean, if you go to the Victoria Rec Center, that, that park is packed full of people. I mean, not during school hours, so I, I, I don't, I don't, I challenge the, challenge the premise.
No, I mean, I, I think, uh, I think we understand why he probably stated that.
There's motivation there.
Sure.
But there's, but, you know, that's, that, that is the, the tightening of the standards, I think that, that we're responsible for.
Yeah, yeah, well, I think, I don't wanna speak for all of us, but I think this is exciting, I think we're supported this, and we, I think we would all look forward to being involved with this and, you know, taking a much closer look.
Mm-hmm.
It's great for Victoria. Thank you.
Yeah, good, thanks.
One thing more, just have to put this in, will landscaping standards be included?
Yeah, so, is, it is a great question. The standards are, right now, there are some landscaping standards, but we have a separate section also, but, but we make reference to in the guidelines, and I think we, we could certainly incorporate into those guidelines landscaping, and, and more than just landscaping, but streetscaping, right? So we look at kind of the whole corridor, and, and kinda all of the public realm in the downtown space outside of the building front as, as kind of a zone, and then we talk about that, so I, I think absolutely.
But I'm also concerned with, say, we grant a special use permit to some building, and they just put up their sign and use their building the way they've requested, but they could've enhanced the outside a little bit?
So, right now, there's some provisions in your ordinance that relate to if you redevelop a certain percentage of your building, you'd be required to then implement design standards. I think the trigger points could be looked at as a part of your design standard to say what is, what is the appropriate time to require somebody to bring a building up to current standard versus being able to just go in and reuse what's there. And so I think that, I think that's, it's very common in an ordinance to identify that trigger point, whatever it is, whatever the mechanism is that makes you then have to bring it up versus saying you can just go in and use what's there. So, yeah.
I think it's better.
Yeah.
I think we have to be careful with that, because I think about how building requirements inside the space change over time.
Mm-hmm.
EDA standards, things like that, those things change all the time. We're talking about the exterior of the buildings, I, I just, you know.
So, so the standards I'm talking about are exterior.
Exactly.
Right, so building code dictates the interior.
Right.
Space, and, and that's kind of out of our hands, which makes it easier, cause we can't, you know, if somebody comes in and they wanna do a certain amount of renovation, then they're gonna have to decide.
My concern is getting too onerous.
Sure. And, and that's why I think being thoughtful on what the trigger point is, right? So if you have a, let's say you have a, a flower shop, and a new flower shop comes in, are you gonna require them to do anything different than what was there, right? They're kinda taking the same use and, and doing the same use. If you had a, say, a flower shop and it was gonna convert into a cafe, you might think about that, that might be a whole different use that triggers the, you know, kinda renovation of some of the exterior elements, and so, and, and you could pick and choose what that is, you could say lighting, you could say color, you could say exterior material, right? You could decide what's too onerous and what's not enough, so I think you could create that.
Yeah, I think these are great discussions, and as we go through the process, this is the items that the planning commission will be looking at, you know, what is that trigger point? Sometimes it's just landscaping that a, a, a new business has to put in, not necessarily any changes to the building, if you, I've seen that, so we'll give you some ideas and we'll help with the discussion, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, good. Thanks.
Okay. All right, we're gonna get an update on city council meetings. Patrick?
So, on their April twenty-second meeting, the city council approved the lot coverage ordinance that was in front of you. They also approved the Arbor Woods beauty, the mayor congratulated staff and the planning commission coming up with a recommendation, the solution that was appeased everybody. They had the Bethesda public hearing for the TIF, which is, has been continued, and I think will be continuing again. They also have a discussion about the trail gap prioritization, the Parks and Rec Department and Commission had made some recommendations of figuring out what are these key trail pieces that have to be installed.
Mm-hmm.
And then at their May thirteenth meeting, they, again, they continue that Bethesda TIF request, public hearing. That was it for planning-related items.
Good. Anybody watch it, and have any comments or anything?
I have a question, what was the outcome with the TIF? Did, did?
It's continued.
So it's been continued.
Okay.
And I think it's gonna be continued to the June tenth council meeting.
Are they looking for more facts, or?
No, we're, staff and the applicant are trying to work out the agreement just to safeguard the city as much as we can.
Okay.
So, going through the language, when you deal with legal language, it usually takes time, make sure everybody's on the same page and understands.
John?
I was, I was at both of the city council meetings, and I thought the discussion on TIF was, was very good. I thought that the, the consultant, I thought she did, did a very good job of presenting it, well, here's what it is, you know, I mean, you know, whatever, whatever you think it is, here's, here's what it is, here's how it works, here's, here's the facts on it, and, and that either is very good for the city or not. And, you know, the council will make their decisions based on that, but, but here's, here's the information, and, and it was, you know, another gentleman spoke, and, and it was basically the same thing, here's, here's, here's what that means to us, you know, as a, as a community. And, and so, is that, is that good or bad? Well, it's, you know, I think the, the takeaway that I had from the whole thing was, it's a tool, it's a tool that's available, and is it a tool that should be utilized? You know, I have, I have a view that, at, at the same time, but I think it's, I think it's a tool, and, and I think it's a tool that can either be, either be used or abused, so, yeah, productive, productive city council meeting, I think, on, on the TIF.
Good, thanks, John. You gonna say something?
Nope.
Uh, any? Jared?
They also had the workshop on the affordable housing.
Mm-hmm.
Before the council meeting, that was rather interesting to, that I sat through, kinda goes back to the fact it's, that we need, you know, we're gonna be forced to get into some affordable housing, where it's gonna get located and how you put it into place is still a tough situation, just like we were talking, like Dave was talking about, you know, when you start getting lot sizes and, you know, and the price of houses keep going up, you know, where does that affordable housing come into play? But it was very, if you got a chance, you know, watch the workshop, or, it was very informative of, you know, how the whole affordable housing process works, and what we're gonna be looking for, or looking at in the future.
Well, and there was a high school senior that had, that gave a presentation on affordable housing, and it was part of a class project, and, and he, you know, he did, he did a good job, but it's a, it's, it's a reality to whatever level, and, and I, and I think it's, I think it's a, you know, it's something that has to be addressed, and, you know, like, like everything, there's, there's a whole bunch of different views, and I'm sure most people have a view, a view on it, but it was, yeah, I thought it was, I thought it was pretty good. Pretty good presentation.
Thanks, Jared. Well, kinda following suit with that, you, there was also a handout in front of us all for the twenty nineteen city council meetings, or, I'm assuming that we're gonna kinda go back to the past where you've assigned each of us dates, we're gonna attend, well, either attend or watch, and then we'll be reporting on that meeting at our planning commission meeting?
Right, that, that was my understanding of what the planning commission wanted to do at the last meeting, so that's why I came up with the table.
Yeah, we did it in the past, I, I enjoyed it, I mean, I, I'd watch them, I think, I think it's important that we all watch them anyways, but I think it's, we get to listen to you most of the night when we're here, so it's nice when one of us, we get to hear one of ourselves talk a little bit. So, so everyone's got that, and we'll, and if you have any, you know, if you're, if you notice you're gonna be on vacation or something, just email one of us and we'll switch it up, alright? Yeah.
The, the one thing I was gonna mention in the miscellaneous, but I might, might as well mention it now, but unfortunately, Ann Walter has resigned, you probably understand because she's been missing a few of the meetings, just life got hectic for her, and she's gonna have to, we'll have to find another alternate for now, so I will change this and I'll, I'll email it out.
Okay.
Cause she was the first one.
Change the man. Anything under miscellaneous tonight?
I have just a question about this.
Yeah.
You implied that we could watch the meeting at home rather than physically attending here.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as you just, you know, watch it.
Yeah.
One way or the other, and then be able to provide an update, I think watching it on, at home was good.
Good.
Yeah, especially if it's raining.
Or snowing.
Anything else, anybody up here?
There will not be an attendance on the June eighteenth meeting.
Okay.
Oh, I won't either, come to think of it. Oh, yeah, June, no, I'll be here in June, not July.
Alright, June, June eighteenth is next. Okay, well, no takers, then I make a motion that we close the meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, meeting is adjourned.
Hold on, Chair.